And that's the same with everybody, they all have their folks.
People have so much fun.
Really?
Well, because we stay at 5:00, everyone.
5:00.
So I mean, you're like that phone, and I know it's five minutes ahead, but I don't see.
All right, 6:00. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, also, I read our mission statement in partnership with communities. The mission of the Northland Health School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect, so they become self-directed, responsible, like long. Welcome, all board members of Central Florida are present, others present. We have our superintendent, our district staff, and our one lone guest, welcome. Thank you for coming. All right, do we make changes to the agenda?
We do.
No changes to the agenda, do we have a motion to approve?
Oh, no.
Motion by Brittany? No, oh, sorry.
I'll second.
Second by Brittany. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, public comments, for recognition, I don't think anybody's commenting. So I emailed Joe, I know there was a lot of activities, so I asked him to email me the official places and different things of everybody participating, state stuff. So track and field state, Josh Vincent, ninth in the long jump, eighth place in the 400-meter dash, and first place in the state triple jump, so we have a state champion. Congratulations to Josh.
Forty-six feet, one and a half inches.
Wow.
I'm not kidding, that's just a, it's, the next closest he said was a foot and a half behind.
Wow.
So, kudo, I mean, just fantastic.
Congratulations. So yeah, he's heading off to India's U to participate in track, track and field there, so good for him. Michael Pearson, eighth place in the 110-millimeter hurdles, fourth place in the 300-meter hurdles, and point out this is his first year over track. That's pretty, pretty awesome, pretty amazing, so congratulations, Michael. Yeah, hurdles, yeah. Emma Hallowood, 14th place in the Schapler, and eighth place in Diskus, so congratulations to Emma. State softball, Shannon and I will be able to attend on Thursday, the girls play fourth place. They beat number two, the Sora Henderson, and lost to the state champ, Chatfield, and lost to Maple Leaf, but all close games, except the second day, but congratulations to the girls softball team. And I think Skylar Spessard was on the alternate team, so congratulations to her. Baseball sections, they lost to Purim, and then third in the section, close games, and then Roseville, and then according to the section. And then, girls only section participant was Lexi Vadel. Yeah, B-A-T-E-L-D. Yeah, so, that is the state sport wrap-up. Anything in the arts? From anybody else? So, I, I will say that this state softball thing was a lot of fun, just to see the excitement. Now if I drive, then see if I power them away on the next day. It worked, because well, I killed a thousand mosquitoes for the public that's watching, at least. So, anyway, congratulations to all our kids, set our stories. All right, 6.1, board committee reports. I can't remember what our last meeting was, was it May 23rd? Because we did have a personnel meeting, which I will give you the agenda, and your wonderful memory can share with us.
But we are certainly working on administrative contracts, and working with them individually having discussions. There were some changes to some health insurance amounts, you probably saw that. We are going to start negotiating with MSDA. Arrows and, there's no we go, but they really want to get going until July.
After July 4th, he said he would reach out himself.
Yeah, so, we're a little bit of a hold there. With regard to the insurance, I think everyone's, we're all aware of the changes that happened with the insurance, and it was very positive, we're just fortunate to hit bids, and. We went over the new employee list, but I don't know if there was a whole lot to go over with that, we are all over the new employees. And then we talked about scheduling for negotiations, which is left out, so, pretty straightforward.
Any questions? Anybody else? Family meetings? Tarnishan and I have a meeting at 4:00, on activity. Maybe, we're gonna meet with Mrs. Katie Omen, we're gonna go over the new handbook, and there's some changes, so, we got that going on, so we'll update you after I put out. All right, superintendent reports, 6.2.
Awesome, as you guys so shared, in the last couple weeks, weekly updates about certain stop times for elementary and middle school. Been visiting with the transportation contractors as well on that, obviously Eileen, at a big contractor, we've been visiting one as well. Our hope, or my hope is, is that we can start our high school at 8:00, be done at 2:50. Now that we're all together over there, just for activities, the practice, or they're gonna get out, the other thing is our bus contractors can run a route and come back, and those drivers could then also drive an activity bus, because it would be done earlier, is our hope, so we can get more support. This spring was less than ideal with transportation and all the activities, and those bus drivers were still out on routes when we needed to leave, and, and I'm hoping that can help with that. Then the elementary would be at 8:15 to 3:05. Eileen has been working through kind of what that might look like, as I shared with you guys in my weekly update, I don't want kids to be picked up way earlier because of this. Right now, Eileen is thinking that it'll be a five-minute adjustment, probably at the most. So, if we can clean up that, I think it'll just be how we start with our new schools, with all elementary kids here, middle school, high school there. I think it's gonna be better for our kids to get started and be done a little bit earlier over there, so their activities can get going. The other part for me was having the high school, middle school kids over there done earlier, so they can leave the parking lot. However, kids leave a parking lot in high school, and then our elementary kids from here, that are Glendon Felton kids, will come over there, and that parking lot should be quieter, it can be a safer drop-off and pickup for parents, or transferred to other route buses, and whatever. So, that's another big piece of that safety, and I think giving high school kids over there, that gives them a half an hour to get out of the parking lot before we'd be coming over with other kids, our elementary kids, so, that's the other piece. So, discussing and sharing that information with you guys, so, and we can discuss in the final decisions on that hopefully the end of this month. If that's what the end of you guys can get on the agenda, let's go forward. If there's other questions or concerns, if you hear from your constituents, your neighbors, whatever, please share, I don't want to.
My only question is if parents are leaving their younger kids home with the older kids to get them on the bus, and then the other kids leave first, then we've got little people?
Yep, so little people in Glendon, so let's say you're a Felton parent, and you got a kid, we have the commons area there, so they can be in the commons area, yeah, and then the buses are gonna drop in the back, so then the Glendon Felton kids, kindergarten or first grade, whatever, can walk out and get on their route, or their shuttle bus to go.
Oh.
And there'll be people there, so we've already talked about, there'll be people that are gonna help with making sure Shannon gets on the right bus, and we have that whole new commons area, that's gonna be the.
That would be my only question.
Yeah, no, it's a great question, so we've talked a lot about logistics.
I assume you already had a answer.
Well, no, but I just, yeah, we had a lot of those same questions, which are good, they're, they're real, so, yeah.
How does that early retirement matchup then with mortgage on career?
That's another discussion that Katie said, once we make that decision, how we can, in, in one sense, it'll be nice, because we'll have time to shuttle people and get them around, or whatever that looks like, but she, she at this point hasn't come to me and said, yikes, that doesn't work for our academy, so, I haven't heard anything on that. So, it's a good question.
Do we know about other schools, do their schools have similar?
Actually, a lot of high schools start even 7:45, 7:30, 7:45, 8:00, same reasons. What's that? What time is more than I don't?
But the, the younger kids, high schools like 8:20, but then, but the elementary's like 7:40, and the middle school is 9:05, you know, they stagger for about three minutes.
Yeah, most of you researched the city, most have high schools starting earlier, and the reason is for these activities. So I'm hoping that in the spring, well, it's not only spring, but spring seems to be the biggest deal with golf and track, and getting out in time, that they're gonna miss less school. Yeah, we want them to.
Yeah, I do like that, that they would, you know, because miss, missing so much class. I also think it'd be nice for practices to start, like, early, so they're done, so when parents aren't sitting off waiting, pick your kids up till 6, 6:15, if they can get started 15 minutes earlier, they should be able to be done 15 minutes earlier, and get their kids to get home.
Yep, I guess that's, I just think it's, it benefits the high school kid, middle school kid, quite a bit. Anything with activities is gonna be just a little bit earlier, a little bit sooner, and then our transportation hopefully can be.
Well, and I think that's like the transportation piece, talking to our contractors.
Oh, no, 8:20, yeah, and then second goal is 8:25, and then they went.
Do you think we need to bring it down, the microphone down? Wonder if they can hear us?
I'm kicking myself, bringing it out in the video.
All right, to anybody that watches this tomorrow, our computer technology setup, we're having a discussion about early starting end times, so.
So, that's that, I guess one more discussion, and hopefully June 27th, between now and then, people can get questions answered, and we'll get more information, and then we can hopefully make that decision, so we can start to make those plans. Obviously, the high school wants to know for sure what scheduling, and one of the things Katie said was Career Fair, so we just make sure we get, or I'm sorry, Career Academy, that we make sure that we get that taken care of. Bus road discussion, I shared that with you also, about potentially expanding the walk zone, and the impact it'll have on our contractors, I have met with them, we're gonna meet again, we're having discussions of what that might look like. Thoughts on what I shared with you guys? I talked to Holly, Pelican Rapids, Barnesville, I, I didn't get a chance to talk to Detroit Lakes, but I heard they're also expanding theirs. For obvious reasons, it's a, it's a fuel excluder cost, our budget from December till this, till what was end of May, was a budget impact of $65,000 just on fuel, and we can't do that. In a year's time, it's gonna be closer to 80, 90, whatever, 100,000, and so, we gotta do something, unfortunately, it does affect people, we get that, but Barnesville went to a mile. Pelican Rapids negotiated one less route with their contractors, so, instead of kind of mishmash how that was, Holly, Phil said they changed theirs a couple years ago, I think he said, and same thing, just kicked it out farther, and it's what you have to do, he said, to adjust costs, and I said, that's kind of where I'm at. So, again, did meet with each contractor last week individually, Eileen and I did, discussing what it might look like, and how the three contractors can share that burden potentially. Gonna have more discussion as we move forward, but, one of the things that Eileen was hoping, and I shared with you guys in the weekly update, if you guys feel comfortable with that walk zone area, she would like to know that sooner or later, because that's what we have to then bring to the contractors, so they know exactly, so maybe we can start planning. The sooner we can plan, obviously, and inform people what it is, the better.
Yeah.
So, you can just give us a verbal go-ahead, so she can go too, or? It's, it's, right now it's three blocks.
Three blocks.
Three blocks? No, not at all. We are gonna honor how we can, obviously, so south side in Door, and the north side in Glendon will still be picked up. We're actually even honoring the tracks in Glendon, just avoid that. We are just still picked up on the north side of the tracks in Glendon as well. So, when you look at them, it's, it's on, I'll just say, the safe side of 10, and the safe side of the tracks, and then it's just expanding it out, just, yeah, so. I, I, I think it's just, we have to be fiscally responsible, and I just think that's right now, with the way the gas prices are, the way they're looking, they're going, other communities have done the same thing to offset their costs, it's, I just feel like it's.
It's not that terrible.
Yeah, I mean, growing up in this town, we didn't even have a bus ride. You didn't have buses at all. And I mean, I know, I know for some parents, it's.
It's gonna, yeah, it's gonna be difficult.
It's gonna be different, but I hope that community, you know, neighborhoods like older kids will, you know, maybe step up and want the younger kids to, to school or wherever. It's not easy, but I don't really think they have a choice with the cost of fuel and the lack of bus drivers, I, we're up against a wall, and we're gonna make a decision. So I think that Eileen should probably get going on sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Just so people can make, start making plans to what their morning looks like.
Yeah, and then they have a month, and they have, you know, a couple months here to get organized, I hope, and get a plan.
So we're pushing the start times up, are we also pushing like the, the monitor times up?
Monitor times.
So like you can drop them up in Door, so like 7:45, and then we.
So the drops, so, I think Eileen, and so, don't quote me on this, I wanna say 7:40, I think is what she said, probably, over here, and then it'll be close to that over there too. We do have areas for them to go, they can come in here and have breakfast, so an elementary kid that gets, has to be dropped, breakfast will be up and running, they can come into that area. I know elementary kids, because that's all who'll be here, they can also go up the flight room, because we've had supervision after they eat or while they're waiting to come in. In Glendon, we have the new commons area, and that was our plan, anybody that has to be dropped off earlier, whatever, that'll be a safe place for them to be, they'll be inside, they're gonna be warm, and most of our season is, our school year is cold, like this year, so, anyway, so we have safe places for people to be, and then we'll be people that are chaperoning or don't want it, sure to, to. Be there, be a.
I think some of the Door work ones, we had on or kept there too, because the Glendon ones were being picked up, because there's extra room, and the buses coming in from the north, so they automatically just stopped and picked up all the Glendon ones, and we thought to be fair, you should pick up the Door work ones too, at the same time, so, now this would be kind of the opposite way, both of them will get dropped, and, fair to both cities, so.
Yeah, the other part of that then is, it just, it shortens the route, and so they can be more efficient, they can get to the school quicker, and so, that's why the pickup times don't have to be so drastically adjusted, because they're not coming into town now, making two, three stops, they're going right to the school. So that's where they can save that pickup time, so, hopefully that makes sense to the public.
Might be a little bit more drastic, but obviously our open kids, okay, isn't it sweet statute that we can say that they have to get to the district line if they want to get out with us, or is that not perfect conversation?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to go there yet, that's a good question, I get what you're saying. Eileen and I have had a lot of conversations, and I guess this is where we felt was the most efficient and least disruptive. We did talk about that a little bit too, but I guess, yeah.
Any other questions on this, the bus road, so, I think our official stance right now is, we're gonna start working on it.
Yeah, and, and that's our piece now, will be to start informing and get this going. Obviously, our contractors is who we need to meet with next about that, and that's why I appreciate that discussion tonight. Middle school gym updates, they are gonna tear it out in July, and they're gonna replace in August sometime. Trying to coordinate a little bit with the other gym, and now there's some things with that too, so we'll see. Anyway, that is still in the insurance area, still feeling confident that something will happen, as far as money to pay for the majority of it, still working on that, but it has to be done, obviously, because of the condition it's in and whatnot, so, just so you know. Construction update, we do have a facilities committee meeting later, we can talk more about that, you guys just went through the lock thing in Door, it's coming along. There has been some significant demo going on, and getting things going, and, so it's really encouraged, I guess, since the school's been out, of what they got to work on right away. And same with the Glendon site, it's moving along at a much faster pace, most of these companies are sending actual crews out here to get things done, and we're still, our kids and the elementary are gonna be able to be here in August, I'm sorry, September, they're just gonna be able to meet, we know that, same with theirs, so we don't have to worry about that, we're, it's, it's, it's moving forward.
Did we ever get bleachers in Glendon, or no?
What's that?
Do we ever get bleachers in Glendon?
Yeah, bleachers are there, they got, anyway, they're there, and there's a whole staff with them, but that's gonna get fixed here, so.
But they're very deep, and you're. I have sat on them, and Ronnie, they are nice.
They are the right ones.
Sit back to back, and they'll be good.
They're gonna be beautiful.
Yeah, you're gonna be able to.
I sat there, and I smiled, and I said, Ronnie, got, got the bleachers.
They are the runs we needed to get.
They are, they, it's, it's very, people are gonna be able to bring their stadium chairs if they've invested in, to say, and there'll still be room to walk behind, it's gonna be very, very.
Yeah, it's very sure.
It's very, very.
And they got better railings going up than our old gym, those.
They're, they're similar look, but they were secure anyway.
Yeah, they were secure, and then we talked about, I think Phil put, you know, like other places put garbage cams on the way up the stairs, littler ones, so people aren't, hopefully, will, if it's going on again. Why, he's leaving the heavens all the time. Anyway.
Are you still there, you're the only one here.
Yep, we're still here.
That's my chat.
Sorry, Brittany, thank you.
No, anyway, so it does look good, they did say that July 4th, the high school gym should start to become available for our high school teams, volleyball, basketball, to practice and do shooting, so, that's the target date, I asked Travis Kim last week, and he felt that was still on schedule, so. So, not that that's on our agenda yet, but our next board meeting, it's potentially, it'll be able to be, or we'll be able to meet in the community room.
Oh, thanks.
It's the 27th, and, so, we'll stay tuned on that.
So, we're gonna take ownership of the.
Yeah, we're gonna have to see if we get occupancy or not, he's saying the kids are gonna be able to go in there July 4th, I'm hoping that we can get out of the community, but we'll see, but that's what I'm hoping. Any questions?
All right.
Awesome, thank you.
Move on to 6.1, approval of the regular meeting, May 23rd, 2022 meeting, is there a motion? Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. David, can you do the old duty and grab the, the bills? All right, so next is 8.0 consent agenda, what are other claims or bills this time?
It's 2,619,851, and so.
Great. We also included in our package, approved the file, the audit for the third-year monthly budget report, resignation of Yvonne Crowner, bestowed effective June 2nd, approved the donations from Optimal Chiropractor, in the amount of golf balls and miscellaneous golf equipment for the DGF boys' golf team, approved the donation from Houston Shriver Masonry, the amount of $200 for summer recreation, approved the donation from United Amusements in the amount of $100 for summer recreation, and approved the donation from Labby's Grill and Bar in the amount of $100 for summer recreation, so thank you to all of them who donated to our school. Do we have a motion? Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by Amy, any questions or discussions? Ronnie, do you see anything in the bills? I didn't see anything when I looked.
Just a lot of them.
Yeah.
Lot of contractors stuff, obviously, the 2.6 million, a lot of that, or most of that, majority of it was contractors, and.
Consulting fees and services.
Yeah, so I looked through a few of them, Ashley Brooke and I did, again, so there was some newer names in there too, but we looked through what they were doing, and that's what they've been doing, so, it checked out, I guess.
All right, any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, 9.1, this is a, to approve Liberty Mutual Insurance, property general liability, auto crime, inland marine, DNO, and excess, an insurance company of the West, workers' comp is providers for fiscal year '23, do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Nicole, do you want to have some discussion about this, let us know?
Yeah, just so you guys know, I met with Greg last week, week before, was in track, and then I met with him a second time, and he was doing well in negotiating, he did throw it out to EMC also, they did not bid it, so he has an official letter, if you wanted to see, they did not, in this quote, so it did stay with Liberty. It was a $10,426 increase, I met with superintendents today, asking them what their liabilities have been up in their property and all this, and basically, everybody across the board, it's gone up quite a bit, ours was to 11.27%, which isn't great. We did increase our deductible on our property from 2,500 to 10,000, which saved us 2,300 bucks. I worked with him on that, just felt it's unproperty, that makes more sense. So yeah, it is kind of what it is in our market today, obviously, our buildings increased the value too, so our property, that went up by a little, around $2,000, or just our property alone, so. Yeah, it's, workman's comp has been kind of the thorn in our side here, I guess, is what he showed me, our ratings, and that went up 5,500, so that was our biggest increase, just different things on the job, so. Having Rhonda, we've worked through a bunch of stuff on that to improve, our numbers and our ratings are getting better, but, they're high stuff, it, it takes a while to recover that, so, that was our probably, well, obviously, half or over half of our increase was from work. Anyway, other questions on that, I have a comparison from last year to this year right here, so if you want to look at that.
It's nothing to do with bidding through Baller or anything, this is just independent bid.
Yep, yep, this is just our property general, and so they have nothing, Baller has nothing to do with this insurance. Good question, though.
Any other questions?
Can you use a broker for this?
We don't, just so you know, Baller did approach me on this, and so I said it's something potentially we can look at in the future, right now. And felt like that. And so, I just want to screenplay that a little bit, because I don't know about always want to ask me what, what to talk about in the future and have more discussions, so. They are in this world, and did reach out, I said, it's good to know, we'll have further discussions in the future, so, yeah.
All right, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries. 9.2, this is a designation to approve the superintendent Shannon Nussett, to act as the identified, identified official with authority to Iowa for the DGF school district, 2164, you have a motion? Motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by David, any questions or discussion?
Is this the one we do every year?
We did, yes, we do this every year, and then we did designate, during Brian's last contract, we had to, we designated Joe to be Iowa backup too, so that's something we could do down the road, if we feel like we need to do it, but yeah, we do this every year. Great question. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Milk bids, so in your package, our food director has submitted, but, oh, this one doesn't even have, oh, Land O' Lakes must have not, oh, Land O' Lakes shows not to submit an outfit for requested for upcoming year, so, we're gonna stay with Casco for the 2022-23 school year.
It's a seven, you see the average is about a seven cents a carton increase, so, take our kids, and they each have one carton, changes the budget a little bit. My numbers are good in my head, and it's like 18,808 still rings in my head, so, that's just an outfit.
That's an outfit, all right, you have a motion. Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole, any questions or discussion?
Do you think they, they didn't submit because we requested them not to, or what does that?
No, I.
They chose not to.
They chose, it's the only good we have. No, I, they chose, it's the only good we have was.
Yes, for Land O' Lakes, I think it's a bit.
Yeah.
Well, what did you say, it was up seven cents?
Well, if you just compare it from last year, so we've, I don't know, you guys maybe don't have last year this year. I have last year, so, a one percent half price was twenty cents, twenty, and now it's twenty-seven ninety, so it's a little more than seven cents. Same with all of them, it came out to an average of about a seven, seven cent per carton increase. So, substantial. So it's just, you know, it's just another thing, so. Which is, Brad is next, so.
I see the Brad one now.
That's about twenty cents per serving.
Any other questions? Maybe we have a, no, you're good, move the motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Bread bids, it looks like between Panagold and Beanbow Bakery, Beanbow Bakery responded that they cannot accommodate adding us to the route at this time, so his recommendation is to stay with Panagold for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Do we have a motion? Amy. Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Amy, any questions or discussion?
This is about a twenty, it comes out to about twenty cents per serving, on average, more. So, I mean, cents? Twenty cents, so when you say a whole grain hamburger bun size, so, the cost per serving, so the cost per serving is fourteen point two cents.
Yeah.
And, I'm sorry, and it was twelve cents, so I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's two.
Point two cents.
It's point two cents per serving, I'm sorry, and not twenty cents. Yeah, it was thirty, is it thirty, there, and I have last year, so I should give a ten of this, the size says sixty, and in, in the past, they reported it at thirty, so, yeah, it is two cents more, per serving, again. So, I didn't run the numbers, 'cause I don't know how they run, you know, it's not every day we have hamburger buns, it's not every day we have a toast or whatever, so. The impact to that budget, I don't know, I know milk is just, one per kid is eighteen thousand, so this is, it's gonna affect the budget also, obviously. It is what it is.
Reimbursed anywhere else, or you gotta pick that up from the boss?
Yeah, 'cause this is not a commodity, so, yeah, that's, it is what it is.
Neither one?
Nope, yeah, they're both that way, and we, we had a grant, we had one grant that we wrote for milk, it's gonna help offset the milk price, but it's an annual, one-year deal, so hopefully. I don't know if it's gonna fully cover this increase, so that's something I have to look at, too, 'cause we just got these, so, but we did have a grant for milk. Well, take that back, we had a grant that we could use for different things, but it pretty much was a wash with the milk from last year's price, so that's what our plan was, is to just use it for that. Anyway, so.
Random question, though, do we, is it, I don't know, the nutrition rules, do we make kids take the milk, or can they choose not to?
Great question, whatever the rule is, I, I'm sorry, I don't think they're required to, I'm almost positive they're required to. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. I, I'm, it's just like the fruits and all that, I mean, they gotta check their tray to be a, to be a reimbursable meal, they have to have all those components in milk, because obviously, dairy has gotta be one of them. I'm not sure if they can replace it with cheese or not, dairy is the deal, and.
I can live on.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should know that, but I, I would say I'm about ninety percent sure they have, but, yeah.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, nine point five. This is the FY twenty-three meal prices, elementary breakfast, one point, dollar eighty. It's what I read all day, one point eight liters, no, this is a, elementary lunch, three dollars and forty-five cents. Secondary breakfast, dollar eighty, secondary lunch, three fifty, adult breakfast, three thirty, adult lunch, four seventy-five, sibling breakfast, two dollars, sibling lunch, three twenty-five, entree, extra breakfast, a dollar seventy, and extra entree lunch, two ten, and reduced breakfasts free and reduced lunches free. Oh, no, it's okay. Sibling breakfast, or sibling meals, is that one like your little bit little baby sister or whatever, comes to have lunch and do, yeah, yeah.
I should've asked this earlier, too, but, do we, what did, what were they before, when we had, sort of picked them?
So that's, yeah, I have the numbers here for that, too, so I can do that, go ahead.
Yeah, let's get them, let's just get a motion.
Okay, that would be just.
No, that's okay, so, all right, what's your Michael, this is a second. Second by David, all right, discussion, what were the prices before, I would love to hear this, and I think the public would love to hear this.
Yeah, so breakfast is up forty cents for the elementary, and up sixty-five cents for lunch, since the last time they did. And secondary is thirty and sixty, so thirty percent up for breakfast, and sixty cents more for secondary lunch. Obviously, these prices and whatnot are affected by this, but this is a number we did set, we told them.
Yeah, so just so the public is aware, this, this price is not set by the school district, this is what we're told, prices would be set up, and it's by state.
Yeah, state fed, so.
Do the secondary kids get more food?
I don't, I can't answer that.
Does it cost more for mommy?
I, yeah, it.
That whole five cents more.
Yeah, it's.
Only forty-nine is weird, can't do that.
I don't know.
That's a very good.
Meal prices have always been an interesting thing to me, so I don't know. Unfortunately, the, the free lunches are over, the state did not step up to help with that, they were talking about helping the feds and USDA, and they didn't, and USDA let that go as well. Lot of costs out there, and I get that, but it sure would've been nice if there was something for offsetting costs, but there isn't, so it's gonna go back to our families. So unfortunately, it is just one more thing added to our family.
Is it still a benefit for us, for them signing up for free and reduce?
There is, compensatory was a big discussion today, so I have, to be honest with you, Ronnie, it's, I'm looking at incentives to fill out the paperwork, whether it's activity fee reduction, if it's this fee reduction, if you fill out the paperwork and do it correctly, that whether you, you qualify or not, we don't, we just need people to start filling out, 'cause people don't realize that they qualify sometimes, until they fill it out, and we'd like to give them an incentive just to fill it out. So, I'm working through that with the activities department, is there something we could do on that end, is there some, I don't know. 'Cause I was looking at, I wanna bring that to you guys, so you guys can approve some kind of incentive package, because compensatory dollars across the state were just, like, substantially lower, so, ours were down some, obviously, and we want people to fill it out, so we can get the most we can out of that, because it affects a lot of funding streams for the district.
Maybe these increased prices will be there, too.
Potentially, might try somebody to fill it out, so, we're still working through that, so. By next fall, when people start filling out paperwork to re-enroll or to go into activities, then maybe there's some incentive package that we can put out there to get that paperwork filled out, I don't know, that's something we're gonna have to discuss, so. There you go.
We have a motion by Nicole, that's my David, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Nine point six, ESY contracts, these are the ESY contracts for this number twenty-two. Matt Retzer, thirty-five dollars an hour up to fifty-four hours, Keri Krebs, thirty-five hours up to twenty-nine hours, Rebecca Donahue, thirty-five dollars an hour up to twenty-five hours, Rachel Gilbert, thirty-five dollars up to twenty hours, Rebecca Donahue, there, we already said these, if there's perk B, I don't know what's a perk B, perk C, let's touch you.
You know, I'm not gonna sit here and, I wish Mary Ann was here, I don't know exactly what the difference is, I know that their hourly rate is a contracted rate, so student contact is thirty-five dollars an hour. So there's different qualifications, and they extend the school year through special ed, and I.
What might be evaluating, like, special ed? That's not so simple?
Could be.
So, we'll have some repeats of names, so for the public watching, more wordless. Thirty-five dollars up to eighty hours, Credit Hunter, speech, thirty-five dollars up to, an hour up to thirty hours, Rachel Colbert, um, evaluations, thirty-five dollars an hour up to twenty hours, Keri Krebs, evaluation, thirty-five dollars an hour up to thirty hours, Rachel Putter, Perez, sixteen fifty-one an hour up to twenty-seven hours, Amanda Olson, Perez, seventeen nineteen, an hour up to forty-two hours, Shayna Yarba, Perez, sixteen fifty-one an hour up to forty-two hours, Sheila Butna, Perez, sixteen eighty-five an hour up to forty-two hours, Mackenzie Perla, Perez, sixteen sixty-seven an hour up to forty-two hours, and Angela Bjorkin, Perez, sixteen fifty-one an hour up to forty-two hours. Do we have a motion?
Come on.
Motion by Brittany, is there a second? Second by Nicole, any questions or discussion?
Yeah, as I look at it now, it is that, it's, so, during your teacher time, you get up to twenty hours, but then there is some prep evaluation time also, if they have to.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Nine point seven, this is a non-certified contract for Desiree Prado, her professional, effective the start of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we have a motion. A motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. All right, so our next board meeting will be Monday, June twenty-seventh. Site to be announced to the public, hopefully, hopefully, back in Glendon, like Shannon said, maybe in our community room, we'll kind of play by your see what happens there. Following that will be policy, conclusion of the board meeting. One other thing we just need to talk about, I know Shannon has sent me an email about possibly the afternoon of Thursday, August eleventh, doing a kind of work session about the following, you know, coming year that afternoon at the school, with maybe supper afterwards, has anybody looked at your schedule, considered that?
I took the day off.
Yeah, so.
Charlie, hopefully.
Yeah, yeah, I hope you are coming, that would be awesome, so, yeah, I didn't work on you, it would be off that day. Yeah, we'll check with David more. I have to, and then a supper afterwards, with maybe an activity, just team building, so, anyway, just wanted to make sure we touch base on that. Um, okay, anything else, team? All right, it is six forty-one, meeting adjourned.